Called in May 2021, notification meeting with orders, welcome visitors. Any additions or changes to the agenda?
I have none.
Again, a motion.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Sorry, been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose same sign. Motion carried. Consent agenda.
I have nothing unusual to report on the consent agenda.
Mr. President, the board approved consent agenda as presented. Sorry.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose same sign. Motion carried. Patron comments. Okay. Student handbook.
Really have no substantial changes on the handbook, really nothing at all. Just a continuation, so I'd recommend that the board approve that handbook as we.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the student handbook for the 2021-22 school year as presented.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the student handbook for the 2021 through 22 school year as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose same sign. Motion carried. Classified staff handbook.
We just redid our handbook last year, last summer. It's been quite a while since we'd had an update, so there's not really any significant changes. One thing that we're looking at, I don't know that we'll get anything in place here. We had our work comp review with our insurance provider through KSB. Periodically, they just go through and audit, make sure we're doing things right. One thing to consider would be designating a medical provider that, you know, if somebody's injured at work, we send them to a specific provider to get evaluated for an injury at work. That kind of limits the district. If, we've never seen an issue there, but it just kind of covers if your doctor's really expensive and we have a reasonably priced doctor, we can control that a little bit. So something to consider. I don't have any information. I just highlighted that one on page 47 there that says that we've chosen not to specify a medical provider, but we may consider doing that.
Okay. Any questions?
So this is really just a first look at the policy. I don't anticipate major changes. We'll bring it back next month for final approval.
All right. Thank you. Capital outlay plan.
This has been a work in progress. I've got up here on the, on the screen is a little different than what I've, what was in the supporting documents. Not a whole lot of difference. Looking at purchasing a bus, so this will be paying off our lease purchase and entering into a new lease purchase agreement, essentially extending that. We do have a robust, we really need to replace. It's in rough shape and just safety wise, we need to, we need to upgrade that. Upgrade of some technology. These are just general miscellaneous and furniture. We always have some things that need replaced and updated that we're not really planning for, kind of unexpected expenses. Nothing major here on mechanical and roofing this year. Tennis court and track is something we need to look at, having an update on, not a complete tear off or anything, but just re-color, maybe a second coat on that track. Those will be significant expenses that I can't work into our budget right now. The greenhouse, this is something that I added. The education foundation board has agreed to donate $20,000 toward our greenhouse project in the courtyard, getting a hard structure, permanent structure, but we have to, we still have to get the concrete and electrical service and gas, so we're estimating about $10,000 for that. That concrete work, difficult to get to in that, we're going to need to bring in a pump truck and bring some electrical service underground and water to that area. We do have the girls locker room, lockers on there. Something that, we're in okay shape, they just don't get used very much. They need to be bigger. They can't fit their duffel bag in there, all the bags are all over the floor. The lockers that are in there were not, when they were put in, were not made for the size of duffel bags that the girls have. The boys' lockers are big, but those are football lockers, so we really need to update those lockers in there. The vehicle storage in the old shop is one of those things that's kind of been pushed down the list as we've gone along. It would be nice to get some overhead doors in that old shop area. So you can see just extending our lease purchase out here. One other thing that I changed, just looking at our budget. If you're looking at the plan on the supporting documents, the estimate that we have for the library roof is $130,000. That's an estimate that I had, tearing it all the way off. Maybe we don't have to do that, maybe we can get by cheaper once we get estimates, but it needs, it needs replaced. This, we're looking at, not this summer, but next summer. Came up in our foundation board meeting that perhaps we could discuss using some of those investment funds to pay half of that cost. So doing those things, pushing off some vehicle purchases so we'd skip a year, not replacing any rooftop units this summer, we'd resume that next summer. If the, if we could use some of that investment money to pay for half of the library roof, that really gets us to where, where we need to be on our ending balance is a lot closer. Our lease purchase, we've got three more years on that one, then things look a lot better. Once that's paid off, that frees up a lot of cash. Questions about, so this is just a draft now, we'll do final approval next month. Any input, other things we ought to be looking at right now? Okay, I just wanted to keep that fresh in your minds and let you know some of the things, tweaks we're looking at to that plan.
You're talking about them, our bus route, we have less kids, more kids, getting picked up now?
It's been pretty steady for the last 10 years, really. We fluctuate, so we've got a big bus that goes up toward Hudson in the northeast part. We've got a suburban that goes south and west, and then we've got a smaller bus that goes north and west. We go clear up I radium out of our district and pick up a handful of kids. I would hate to do without a larger bus. You know, the bus that we're replacing is the one that Ron drives now on that route to Hudson. It's a 55 passenger when you put three in a seat, so it's not as big as our largest bus, but not a short one, so. We might be able to do it with a couple of shorter buses, but I'd hate to get in a bind. Not that much more expensive to go with a mid-sized bus like we've got now.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you. Natural gas bill.
This has been one of those things that has been in flux this, this whole period we've been, been looking at. I won't review it all, but if you have questions, you know, the short version is the big cold snap in February caused a price spike, gas shortage as far as delivery. That huge spike took them a while to figure out how to figure that bill. This is the bill we got for our February service, $21,000. In a typical month, it'd be closer to 3,000, maybe with our higher usage since it was so cold, closer to four would be a reasonable bill. So we entered legal action, this board approved entering the legal coalition, so we paid $400 to this KSB coalition to, to work through this and negotiate a deal. They're still working on that. The disagreement isn't with, that symmetry is, is bad to work with. It's still a positive relationship between KSB and the members and symmetry. There's a disagreement about what price is allowed. They're having to pay a price and they're getting gouged and we're getting gouged and that agreement needs to come somewhere. So they're still working on that. What our attorneys recommend, one, one option would be to pay this bill in full with a 5% discount, so save roughly $1,000. And then we, if they work out a better deal, we could get a refund. That refund wouldn't be assured, we may have to fight for that, so that's why our attorneys are suggesting paying $4.57 per unit, which according to them, their reading of the law is the statutory maximum that would be allowed for a price increase during that crisis. So there's a crisis. State law says any price increase over that is profiteering and price gouging, so they say 457 is the number. We still have to pay this other school fee, this utility pass-through, that's transportation. So if we figure 457 based on the units that we use, plus that 10151, we get to 4,090 to 470. So at this point, that's my recommendation, that we pay that before the March 15th, excuse me, May 15th deadline. That would protect us from any late fees or any collections, prevent them from shutting our gas off, and we pay it under protest. They've submitted basically the same letter to Symmetry on behalf of all the members. They're recommending that we submit this payment under protest letter with our payment also. So that's my recommendation, we pay the 457 per unit plus the transportation costs and pay that under protest.
So that second line item, we don't have to pay that $2,000?
The, oh, sorry. I better double check that. I think this, I think it was just that 10150, but I better check. Let's just take that amount off and say 457 per unit plus transportation. And then I'll double check that before I send that payment to KSB. And then I don't have a timeline on when this will be resolved. I thought there was a chance they might have some resolution by now, but a couple of weeks ago, they said it won't be. You need to have a plan to pay by May 15th. Pay something, whatever you choose.
Good. Mr. President, I move the board approve the payment of 457 per unit plus transportation under protest to Symmetry Energy Solutions for the February 21st billing.
Sorry. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the payment of 457 per unit plus transportation cost under protest to Symmetry Energy Solutions for the February 21st billing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose same sign. Motion carried. Fee schedules.
We've got really no changes on the fee schedule, just, we need to adopt this. Based on where we're at, I don't see a need to change any of these. We usually need to look at our meal fees and adjust those based on requirements from the feds, but all meals are going to be free next year for the entire school year for everyone, so there will be no meal fees. So I just left them the same, so if by chance we have to charge something at some point, we have what we need to charge, I guess, but.
But don't, guest people don't pay, right?
Yes, yep.
And those would remain the same?
Yeah, those should be the same. So the adult should stay at 375. So we might note that. We're not going to increase that one. So I'd recommend that be approved with that one change as noted.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the fee schedule as presented with the change of what, 375 for adult?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the fee schedule as presented with the 375 for adult guests. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose same sign. Motion carried. Okay. Summer purchases and bids.
This really just goes along with our capital outlay plan. I'm already done looking at the concrete and our bids for that greenhouse, getting estimates and proposals for that. I'll start on bids on lockers, and I think we can install those ourselves, it's a pretty simple deal, and then getting bids for a bus. So that's my plan to go ahead and start that process, just so it's in the works and then we approve our plan next month. Maybe I'll have bids if, if there's agreement on, that's what we need to do.
Any more information on like the COVID funds and windows, if we can knock some of that out this summer?
No, I don't anticipate windows at all this summer. I think that's even, even if we would have started in January, I think that's a engineer process or architect process and a bigger deal, so I anticipate getting rolling on that, maybe this summer, get that in the works and have that as a next summer project. And honestly, we haven't even started on our application for those SFR funds. The, the other funds that we've had through this process have been pretty, I don't want to say lax, we have to keep track of it, but they're, they're getting a little more stringent on the paperwork that we need to submit what we're going to do, how this helps the COVID situation, we need to submit all that ahead of time, so we haven't, we haven't had time to go through that application yet, so that's one of our first summer tasks, but.
But we have plenty of time to.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Board member activities and reports. Debbie?
Special ed co-op, we went ahead and, and agreed to pay the entire amount for the utilities. There's a couple changes in the administrative office, one of the, the assistant directors has resigned, and the HR director resigned for kids with health reasons. And we're moving the two life skills programs. One of them will move from Kiowa to Medicine Lodge, and I think the other one's moving to Kingman. Looks like we're pretty good on staffing for next year, which is a change.
Thank you.
Well, it's just good to see all the activity with the spring sports and the, come in by and seen them out there shooting, you know, and play visions and stuff like that when I drive by, I just need to see the activity.
Karen?
No.
Carl?
Volunteered for a couple of track meets, and we had a meeting.
Foundation.
Foundation meeting there last week, so, yeah. Totally.
Yeah, foundation will have golf tournament in the fall, try and raise some funds and see what we can do, so.
Oh, I did watch the, the new video today too, Secrets, the AV video.
Oh, I haven't seen that one yet.
It's funny, it's cute.
Thank you. All right. Mr. White.
Okay. I've got both points up here for. Both points up there, I'm not going to go over all that, that's just everything we've crammed into this last couple of weeks, but a couple of points I've, I've noticed, junior high track meet for CPL is supposed to be tomorrow. That was Zoom with the league, that's going to be Thursday, so we're going to have our junior high in the mornings and our high school in the afternoon at McCross. Graduation scheduled for four at the football field or the gym, we'll see, talk about that later, I guess, but hope you guys can be there for that. One big change, I think, for track is the 29th, that's Saturday, track is a one-day deal for classifications now instead of multiple, so they've gone two days, so it won't be all classes competing at one time, 1A has Saturday morning, so a few changes there. I think we have all our state assessments complete, Mrs. Volker's done a really good job of catching those that didn't, she did all the scheduling stuff, she caught the ones that were not here on those days, so we have that. We won't have the data for some time, be interesting kind of to take a look at that data and see where we're at compared to two years ago, because we didn't have state data from last year. Found out today what our college credit hours for our kids, and, and we haven't been doing college credit hours here a tremendous amount of time, it's been six or seven years, but we only have two seniors in this graduating class that are graduating with zero college credits. So out of 18 that are, that are walking the stage, 16 of them have credits. Six of them have between three and 14, and 10 of them have between 15 and 25 hours. Put that in perspective, if you have 24 credit hours, you're a sophomore the next year. So kids are getting a lot of college credits here, particularly for a school this size, we're offering a lot, and hopefully, I think we're going to maybe add some stuff on the math side that we might be able to give them. You guys have heard us talk about the IPS and Zelo and its individual plans of study. Well, this last week, our seniors presented a portfolio that they prepared through this process that kind of tells about themselves and what their interests are and what their skills are and college credits they have and what career they're going into. The presentation of portfolios is a requirement of the state. Quite a few schools around us declined to do that this year, you know, because it's a COVID year, but we went ahead and did it, and we did it in a room down here, and it is open to the public, I put it out on Facebook, it was really, kind of happened fast, so anyway, I was super impressed with our, with the presentations that our seniors made, they did a really good job, and that'll grow every year, because we actually start that process now in the seventh grade. So starting in the seventh grade, they'll add stuff to their portfolio every year until they're seniors, and then every year, they will present, and it'll be a situation where it's open to the public, and we'll eventually do that, maybe at a academic showcase night or something that goes along with some other, where we're, where we're showing off our fine arts and our shop projects and, you know, science projects and things like that. So anyway, something, I think that state is required that's going to be really good, because it makes us seniors think about it. Just a reminder, we're changing the bell schedule for the 21-22 school year to where our LS is going to be in the morning, that's our learning support time, that 20, 24 minute period, I guess, it'll be, we'll go first hour, second hour, and then we'll go that learning support, and then we'll go third hour, fourth hour, and then we'll have lunch at about noon. Right now, our kids go till 12:30 at the junior high and high school before they have lunch, this'll get them lunch 30 minutes earlier. Also moves that learning support time to the middle of the day where it can probably be more useful, and with our intervention position that we open, maybe we can use that and utilize that time a little bit better. One thing that I don't have on here, we are planning on having drivers at it this summer, we just have to get our teacher certified, and we're starting the signup process, we'll meet next Monday with students and get that going. I think we're targeting June 28th as our start date, but we need to get that back rolling where we offer that during the summer, and hopefully, hopefully we can get that done. It's all a matter of how fast the state moves as far as approving certification to teach them. On the administrative side, just got an email this week, House Bill 2064 was passed, they call it the Kansas Promise Act, it's going to be a pretty good deal for a lot of our, a lot of our students moving on, if they go to a, to a junior college and take vocational type, CTE type classes, it'll be paid for. So it'd be a good opportunity for some of our kids to go out and get some type of certification right on. And Barton advertises it as we're going to pay for it, but it, it's a statewide law, so they could go to any, any school and get it, but anyway, that's a good deal for, for our students going forward. Graduation on Wednesday, or on Friday, Saturday, excuse me, looks like, last I looked, we have about a 30% chance of rain on Saturday, and it's supposed to be about 80 degrees. If I had to make a decision right now, I'd probably say we're going to move it inside with a, even a 20% chance of rain, I don't know, Mr. Meyer and I have been talking.
Yeah, we, you know, we had to make this call, you know, two months ago. We didn't want to be in a situation where if we had restrictions that we'd need to be wearing masks and restricting the numbers inside, so we thought it best just to say, let's do it outside. Now that we're here, we, Mr. White talked to a bunch of the kids, said, should we just have it indoors? And they had, there was still some concern with family coming out of town, they said, you know, maybe my grandparents won't come if, if it's inside, just. So we'd still kind of had it in our mind, we were going to go outside, but at this point, we really feel like even a 20, 30% chance of rain, risking that important of a ceremony outside, it just isn't worth it. We can't wait till Friday and say, well, no chance of rain, we're going to go ahead and have, we got to get stuff set up, so we really need a few days to get, get chairs out, get stage set up and do all of those things.
The other factor is how much rain we get tomorrow and possibly Wednesday, and then there's a chance Thursday and Friday, setting in chairs on the field might be kind of funny, sinking down as the ceremony goes on, but.
So if you all are comfortable with it, we're just going to move it inside if, unless there's an objection. Because really, tomorrow, we need to start setting up the gym, that's the position we're in. We can't, we can't make a decision really later than.
What's the restriction going to be then on, on people being there?
None.
We, we have.
It will be if you're comfortable coming, and if not.
Realistically, we have eight, I mean, 18 kids are graduating, you have 10 come per kid, that's 180, and a gym that holds 1,000. Feel pretty comfortable with that.
Yeah.
And it may be more than that, but still, we're, we're well under our capacity.
But setting that up on the football field and then we're lined up, ready to go, and a thunderstorm pops up at 10 till four, and we've got everybody out there, that's, that's a disaster. You know, if we were going to do it in the morning, but in May, four o'clock in the afternoon, you might have zero chance and still have it.
I did talk to the seniors and explain that we'll make a decision on or before Wednesday so that we can do that, but I don't know, they, they have increased the rain chances for Saturday, last time I looked. I just, yeah, I don't know what to do. It's kind of where I'm at, but, but the, and the seniors understand, they. of where I'm at. But, but the, as the seniors understand, they, if they had their preference, probably the majority would say they'd want it on the field. But they understand that we might not be able to do that.
Well, it's, I guess it's apropos to end the year, not knowing what the right decision is, just like we started the year with all of these decisions we've had to make. But none of them are right, but.
So does that mean no fancy dress code?
No fancy dress code. Oh.
For us.
Oh, you want a white jersey in the winter. So if you have, we'll, we'll make that call first thing in the morning. If you have thoughts on that, give me a shout or. The other thing would be next year.
Yep. Next year's graduation, I'd like to entertain the idea at least of maybe moving that to an earlier time, one o'clock or two o'clock in the afternoon instead of four. Just better for people traveling. I've checked Stafford and Maxville are both planning on doing theirs in the morning next year. I don't, I mean, I don't want to base ours off of what they do, but I think if you do it in the morning, people have a hard time getting here for it. If you do it too late in the afternoon, they, they have a hard time coming if they need to drive back at night. So I think one or two o'clock in the morning, or in the afternoon. Not in the morning. What the heck? Let's do that. One or two o'clock in the afternoon would be a good start time. I'm just curious what you guys' input is on that, what your thoughts are.
One o'clock feels a good deal.
I think historically there was some countywide time. Somebody went at ten, somebody went at one, and somebody went at four. It was always on the same day, but that's, I don't know the history there, but.
I say we do our own thing. Don't worry about it.
Well, that, you know.
We'll plan on that.
I think the idea is people, people have family in all three towns or whatever. We're the best. But anyway, so I thought, you know, I did check with the others and even at one o'clock, it wouldn't interfere with, with theirs. Anyway, they're going to be fighting each other over crap. So we'll go ahead and put that on the calendar, I think. Something else I didn't put on, just that we're looking forward, or looking to do next year. One of our issues that we have is bringing sixth grade up into seventh grade. And there's a lot of stress on kids coming in. It's just a different animal. So I think we're going to do a transition night for those kids and new students right before school starts where they can walk through their classes. Stuco will take them through. Teachers will be there to answer questions for them. They'll learn about the different clubs and organizations and who is in charge of them and stuff. So just ease that transition a little bit that I think so. I think that's it. Any other questions?
Thank you.
And we're also doing a little, it's not going to be quite as formal, but our fourth grade moving into fifth and sixth grade is a little bit different animal for those kids too. So they're going to, I think on Monday, just come, bring those kids up to the fifth and sixth grade and see how they move from class to class, just for an hour. Just talk to them about how things are different there. So kind of the same, same situation. Our math curriculum resources, we've narrowed that down to two. It's hard to compare apples to apples with these anymore. A lot of the textbooks aren't a hard textbook that you keep and put away and use all, all year. It's, it's more of a workbook type where you work out of the book and, and you know, it's a consumable. So one of the series, a lot of it is that. It's more consumable. And the other one has the hardback textbooks. So comparing a six-year subscription to a hardback textbook that you may have to replace after six years anyway, it's, it's hard to compare that. So the, the price is significantly different. The resources are very similar. So we met Friday, weren't able to come up with a decision. Both of these series connect to, they're K twelve series. We're just looking at it for seven through twelve. So now we're, we weren't looking at the elementary, but if we're going to adopt one and the elementary is better than another, we probably ought to pick that one. So it's kind of a coin flip on which one we ought to go with right now. So we really need to get those ordered. So here in the next week or so, we ought to have a decision on that. I already went over the greenhouse. I can show you some pictures of that if you, if you wanted to see. It's, it's quite a bit bigger than what we have. And again, it'll be a hard, hard shell aluminum frame. Be heated. We can use it all year long. Now our greenhouse out there is, you know, we can't use it once it gets very cold. And we'll be able to use that for, for a lot of different classes, not just Mr. Delp's. Lots of end of school activities. We've got going on our track meet for elementary on Friday. We've got our preschool graduation Thursday, kindergarten graduation next week. And we'll do our end of year awards assembly in the gym for our elementary kids, first grade through sixth grade on that last day of school. So lots of things going on to finish up the year. Board elections coming up. I know that we've got three up, Sean, Carl and Vance. Vance has refiled.
I've refiled.
Carl has refiled.
To be determined.
To be determined. Okay. And I haven't checked to see if anybody else has filed. I haven't asked. But June first is when that needs to be determined by. So.
Are you waiting for somebody to pay you?
No, no.
Okay.
Waiting for approval from my better half.
Just want to make sure that was on our radar and keep everybody informed on that. The strategic planning, we had talked about having our K S B consultant maybe zoom in. We weren't able to connect and get that worked out. So we'll try that at another meeting coming up to talk through that. So just wanted to let you know that's still on the schedule. Mr. White and I will be attending our United School Administrators Conference in Wichita. We've had virtually zero professional development for. Really anybody for, yeah, they didn't have this last year and we haven't had much. So they are going to do some activities, try to learn from each other and a good opportunity. So we'll be doing that. Foundation golf tournament. We'd like to do that more in the fall, but we could not find a date. So we're doing it June nineteenth. Not ideal for timing. But we've got that in the works and so hopefully raise a little bit of money and generate some publicity for our foundation. We'll have some literature out, maybe post awards, showing people what we do. And we'll have some good support from our vendors, I think. So if you want to play golf, let me know and I'll get you in. Couple of things I don't have on my bullet list is a budget update. The end of the legislative session was kind of crazy. They finished up this weekend. The budget has been approved with some policy changes. I won't dig into all that, but basically our budget is as what was planned and approved by the Supreme Court. So what we've been planning on happening for the next two years, as long as the governor signs it, it will go through and go on as planned.
I will say, Dr. Deepenbrock sent a note saying that the budget showed that they're only going to fund about seventy-four percent of the special ed. And according to the law, it's supposed to be ninety-something. So our allocations will be, our allotments will continue to be more than we had hoped.
That's the, the hidden part of our school funding law that, you know, costs continue to go up. And in special ed, they have said, I think it was a hundred and fifty million, basically a set dollar amount that they were going to increase for future years. It was approved by the Supreme Court, but it won't even keep up with inflation. So the dollars that they're going to put towards special education are, won't keep up with inflation. So that leaves it up to us to make up for that. So the cooperative, their costs increase. The state will make up some of that, but we'll have to make up the rest and that will be continual. That's been happening for ten years, that costs increased and funding is not keeping up. So again, state law says that ninety, ninety-two percent of the excess costs of special education is covered by state funds and it's below eighty percent. And they just agreed to violate the state law every year by the appropriations. So but budget wise, I feel more comfortable about, about where we're, where we're at moving forward. I did get documentation from both the city and the county on redevelopment district. This is for the port. So there are going to be a tax increment financing district. This would be from mid Kansas ag, square mile west. Which that affects us because we're a taxing entity. At some point that will come off the tax rules. Positive thing for our community if it brings jobs and revenue. But that could be something that will affect our evaluation. Did get notice from the county and the city. Wasn't sure how the city was involved, but somehow the tax increment financing has to go through the city. They have to sponsor it even though it's not within the city limits. So we got notice from both of them. If you want to read the legal resolution. I think it's a positive thing for our county, but just wanted to let you know about that there. I think that's all I had from my report.
Okay, thank you. Executive session.
Uh, you know, we need a bit, fifteen minutes of me and Mr. White.
Mr. President, I move the board going to executive session to discuss the performance and qualifications of specific employees and potential new hires pursuant to the non-elected personnel exemption under K O M A with Mr. Meyer and Mr. White to be included and that we return to open session at nine fifteen.
Okay.
Oh, that says nine. Okay. I read it wrongly. Nine fifteen is my.
Okay. Second. Okay, it's been moved in second that we go into executive session to discuss the performance and qualifications of specific employees, potential, and potential new hires pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under K O M A with Mr. White and Mr. Meyer to be included and we return to open session at nine fifteen in this room. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Meeting back to order. All right. Resignations and contracts.
Okay, I've got three resignations. I would recommend the board approve the resignation of Danny Rogers as library clerk. So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve the resignation of Danny Rogers as library clerk. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carried.
I have a letter of resignation here from Ray Davidson for bus driver. I'd recommend approving that for next year.
Still moved. Second. It's been moved in second that we approve the resignation of Ray Davidson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carried.
The letter of resignation here from Alyssa Mahrder, resigned her position as a elementary teacher effective at the end of the school year.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve the resignation of Alyssa Mahrder. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carried.
Would recommend hiring Kim Helfrich as the at-risk teacher for next school year.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second to hire Kim Helfrich as the at-risk teacher. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carried.
I have the supplemental and extended contracts list here. I would recommend approving that list as it's presented here.
Still moved. Second. It's been moved in second to approve the supplemental contracts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carried.
Carl's going to excuse himself. We'll make a note of that. As he stepped out at this time. And I would recommend approving, hiring Taylor Gable as a second grade teacher for next school year.
For me? Second. It's been moved in second that hire Taylor Gable as a second grade teacher for next year. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carried. All right. Future agenda.
You know what? I'm sorry. I had negotiations on here.
Okay.
To, for executive session. I can just send you the info unless you want to figure out. I can just get with our negotiations people and then send out some info. If you prefer to do that, I'll go with that.
Okay. All right. Future agenda.
We haven't started on negotiations at all. I just wanted to get some information out there. So there's several on your supporting documents or the expanded agenda, the last page. Staff handbook or capital outlay plan, insurance, that's coming up, all the year-end stuff, finalizing the books, all of those things. So.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Motion adjourned.
Still moved.
Second. It's been moved in second that we adjourned. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign.